Like the time has come. We welcome you all here. Are we online and recording? Okay, we're recording and we're live. We want to welcome you all out to our weekly meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, the 12th day of July of 2016. We appreciate every one of you being here with us today. We will begin with our invocation, which will be offered by Ryan Callie, our Elections Director. They must have known you were going to be here, Ryan. Appreciate you coming and appreciate the good work that you've done as part of the elections that have just been come and gone. We'll then have our Pledge of Allegiance, led by Mr. Rick Grover, and our Thought of the Day by Commissioner Gibson. Ryan?
Our dear Heavenly Father, we thank thee this day for the many blessings that we have, especially for the blessing that we have to live in this great country. We thank thee for the blessings and the freedoms that we have, that we're entitled to because of our citizenship in this great country of the United States of America. We thank thee for those leaders that we have who give of themselves to serve us. We ask thee to please bless them, that they will be able to understand the issues that they are faced with, that they will be able to use wisdom in the decisions that they make, that they will be able to be mindful of the consequences of decisions that they make and the people's lives that those decisions impact. We thank thee for the great county that we live in. We thank thee for the families that we have and for the support that they give us in our lives. We ask thee to please bless those people who serve and protect us, especially those in the military, that they will be watched over and protected, that they will be able to return home to their families in safety. We ask thee to bless this country at this time, that those who serve and protect us, especially in law enforcement, that they will be able to use the training that they have wisely, that we as a nation will be able to confront the difficulties that we see throughout the nation in protests and demonstrations, that we'll be able to rise up to those challenges and be able to resolve those issues in a way that allows us to maintain the freedoms that we have, as well as allow those in law enforcement to return home to their families each night. And we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Well, as a Thought of the Day today, I wanted to spend some time talking with you about some of the events of the last week or so. It's always a good time for me to reflect during the patriotic season, the season when we get an opportunity to talk about our country and how grateful we are for the freedoms that we have. We've had some great celebrations this year and have reminded me of my gratitude for those who have made those blessings possible. As we went through the last week, especially with all some of the turmoil in Dallas, my mind has been on our police officers a lot and the sacrifice that they make for us on a daily basis. I had, I came across this little poem that was written by a lady by the name of Kathy Ferris, and she said this. "You choose to be an officer. It is your duty and your call to serve no matter what the risk in a crisis, great or small, preserving life and liberties from jeopardy and threat. No matter what the time or cause, you respond with no regret. The thin blue line of courage is a symbol that reflects the depth of strength to conquer fear, your commitment and respect. When duty calls, the race begins; days end is unbeknown. Though focused on the work at hand, I know your heart is back at home. I understand the job that you do; you're not in it all alone. I'm standing with you; I'm by your side, praying for your safety home. I give to you this special gift, a heart for us to share, holding precious words of love for days so hard to bear. Every moment of every day in my heart you'll always be; we'll never be far apart; you'll have a piece of me." A lot of that resonated with me, but the part I think that gets me the most was the reference to their hearts being at home. And I have some family members who are in this profession, and I know how hard it is at times for their wives and families to send them out the door every day. And what a challenge it is for them to wonder what kind of difficulties they may encounter in that particular day. And I just think that, well, I sit by two individuals who spent their career and their life in that profession, and I'm just extremely grateful for the work that they do and for the wisdom and good decision-making that they make, have made on our behalf throughout their career. I was, there's been a lot of statements over the last week as we have been concerned about Dallas and the things that have happened, but one that really stuck with me hard was a statement uttered by the police chief in Dallas, when he said something to this effect. He said, "Most days in this town, we don't feel an awful lot of support. Let's not let today be one of those days." And I just want to reiterate that to this group, to our group of outstanding officers in Weber County, in all of the cities that we pass through on a daily basis, in our community. I hope that you will always know that we respect and support you, and that as we do so, we can do that in a whole bunch of ways, but mostly in doing our best to make our community a better place to live. So, I just, I hope you'll join me in expressing our gratitude to our, those that we know, our local police officers and military, but more than that, I hope that we will all take a proactive role in doing what we can to improve those situations for those who protect us so much. And my prayer is that we will never be able to say, "This is the day that they didn't feel support from us in our community." So, with that, I would ask, even though it's been a few days since the Dallas situation, I would ask that you all join me in just a brief moment of silence as we think on and honor those who lost their lives in that terrible attack. Okay, we can, maybe I can get through the rest of this now. We will move forward now with part, some of the exciting stuff that we get to do every now and then. We are so grateful to have the opportunity to present some awards. Our County Government Week Awards, those usually are done a little bit earlier in the year, but we had some scheduling issues, so we're happy to be able to do those. We're also really excited today to have with us Ms. Weber County, and we want her to come up and we, while I'm talking about her a little bit, she can be thinking of some things she might want to say to us, okay? But if you'll come up to the microphone. We have Ms. Alex Dratlin?
Dritlin.
Dritlin, thank you. And she has represented us extremely well as Weber County residents in the Miss Utah Pageant, and from what I understand, all the way into the top 10. Does that sound right? And we want to thank her for her excellent representation and the things that she's been able to portray to a statewide and larger community on behalf of who we are and what we believe in. We want to thank Mr. Posey for his work in preparing, helping to prepare her, and his work in developing the Ms. Weber County Pageant. Jan Wilson, of course, from the county works with that as well. And Alex, it looks like you've got your mom here with you, too.
Yes.
Does she, does she have any influence in your success?
Oh, most definitely.
No wonder. I think that's clear that she would. So, Alex, we wanted to just bring you in and tell you congratulations for your excellent performance at the Miss Utah Pageant. Would you tell us a little bit about it, what you might have learned and what you, what you think we should know from your experience?
Of course. So, I've been doing pageants the last couple of years, and my goal was to go to Miss Utah. And as I accomplished that goal, as winning the title of Ms. Weber County and being able to serve this place, I started to think, okay, this was my goal. So, I knew I wanted to work as hard as I could to do my best and represent Weber County well at Miss Utah. So, I made a ton of friends while I was there. It was so much fun. The week went by very fast. And as the week went by, I felt really good every day. I'm like, okay, I did really good today. I did really good today. And then it got to Saturday, and I was like, okay, I did super good this week. And then I thought, well, so did everyone else. So, I didn't have any expectations of placing. Actually, a little funny story is on Saturday, they had a dinner and they had this big plate of Alfredo, and I thought to myself, well, I don't think I placed, so I'm going to splurge. And so, I ate a huge plate of it, and then about an hour later, they called my name onstage as a finalist, and I was like, oh, crap! But it was such amazing experience, and just being able to hold the title for this year, I've seen myself grow as a person in so many ways, and I'm so grateful that I've had the opportunity to serve Weber County. So, thank you for having me here today.
Commissioners?
If I can just say, I had a wonderful opportunity to be a judge in Miss Grantsville, which is a smaller pageant, but what I would like to say is if you had an opportunity to watch the poise and the talent that young women in these pageants have, it is amazing and to watch them under the pressure perform over and over. I was just so thoroughly impressed, and for you to rise to the top for Ms. Weber County and then go on to a larger stage and do as well as you can, just says so much about you and your ability to perform under pressure and the talents that you must possess. So, congratulations and thank you for representing us in such an amazing way. And I just see, you know, the potential you have, that you've shown is just beyond, you know, what a kind of dumb guy like me could ever imagine. So, go and get them. Great job.
Thank you.
Bill, anything else?
Thank you. It was, we're glad you're representing Weber County. It's an awesome thing, as I've been watching this over the years. I've sat here. The girls do a lot of work, and a lot of blood, sweat, and tears goes into doing it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
It's not as easy as some people may imagine, as you could attest to.
Yes, a lot of hard work goes into it.
Yeah, I'd say. And your family, and your mother. I know she's put a lot of work into it, too, and the family has a lot of sacrifice for it. So, that's an important part to remember that, too.
Well, we wanted to get you a little something to show our appreciation, and so we, we got this little bracelet for you that we'll present to you. We hope that you'll wear it in remembrance of this honor, once in a while, that we appreciate your service and your diligent and hard work as you've represented us so well. So, Alex, if we, let's, we want to give her a hand, and then we'll... If you don't mind, if you'll sit close, we'll come take a picture after we present these next two, so that we can do all the pictures together, and we won't have to come running back and forth a few times, okay? So, stay close, and we'll present you this and go from there.
Would you let Commissioner Bill, he cannot wear the tiara.
I will be able to...
He's been eyeballing it the whole time.
I'll take some time, a little glue, and it'll work.
Our next award, these are our Crystal Bowl Awards, and they...
We're about three months behind.
We are behind on them, but that's okay.
Absolutely.
We are getting them done. We want to first present a Crystal Bowl Award to Bert and Kathy Smith. And there was, these were set up by category, weren't they, Shelley? What was this particular category?
Individuals that make a difference in the community.
Okay, so, individuals, and the other award was to Golden Beverage, which is an organization or group that are inspirational in a community. And for Bert and Kathy, I think it's pretty hard for me to think of anybody that I know of that's any more deserving of this award. As you may have known, Bert passed away here within the last year and was just someone that I have always known as a forthright and honest individual, one who absolutely never let any grass grow under his feet, never let an opportunity to improve his community pass by him. And because of that, I think he was really one of my, my great heroes of someone that I wanted to emulate, someone that I wanted to try and be like. I'm not so sure that he would agree that I did a very good job of that, but I tried really hard to think from time to time what Bert might do in a particular situation and emulate that behavior. He also, you know, even though we've, I've known Bert for a long time, I think his enthusiasm and passion might have only been matched by his sweet wife Kathy, who, again, was always willing to take on a difficult challenge and turn it into something special, whether it was being involved in a scouting program, a liberty trek, or anything that would help people to understand the value and the importance of constitutional principles or things that they believe in so strongly, that we believe in so strongly. It has just been a pleasure, Kathy, to watch you. And so, with Bert not able to be with us today, I hope that you will accept this award on behalf of all of us, for both of you, as a partnership, because we know without a doubt that the things that you've been able to accomplish would not be able to happen without both of you together. You did a wonderful, wonderful job. Even though you both individually had some amazing accomplishments, to me, it seems like the bulk of them were much better because you worked together at those things that you did. So, we'll present this Crystal Bowl Award to Bert and Kathy Smith. Commissioners, anything you would like to add on this one?
Sure. I've known Bert for a lot of years and got to know Kathy over the last few years, and talk about an amazing person in principle. And I used to go out and see him at his office when I was back and was working with the Republican Party. I'd go out and visit Bert, or he'd call me and say, "Come on out. I got, I got something for you. We need to talk." What an amazing time sitting in his office out there and going over things and the stories he would tell, and we'd sometimes go take a walk around the store, and he would tell me about different things. But we were always talking about Constitution and always talking about freedom. And the thing that amazed me about Bert Smith was, he talked about it, but then he put his money where his mouth was. And he put a lot of money where his mouth was when it comes to constitutional things. The little booklets, constitutional booklets, and I think Kathy was carrying a couple. I saw her today carrying a couple of them. He has passed those out. I don't know how many I've passed out and how many he's passed out, but I would assume maybe millions of them he's printed and passed out. I don't know how many. There's an awful lot. And he always was there. And then in the last years, as I would visit with him, and I had an opportunity to visit with him and Kathy, just a couple, two or three weeks before he passed away, we sat out in their home and had some great discussions and spent an hour, an hour and a half together. And what, how sharp he was. I mean, everything was, was there in the discussions that we had, and I appreciate that. And it's good to see people who believe it, but then they also believe to put their money what they believe in, instead of, there's so many people in this world that believe in great things, but they want the government money to do it, or someone else's money to do it, not theirs. And this is a family and a person that put it right where it was. So, it's been a great, this has been in the works for many months, and what a deserving folks, and we appreciate all that you do. You have a lot to carry on, and we appreciate that. So, thank you.
Mine's short. My...
Well, not too short, because Marisha just texted me, and she said, "I'm three minutes out."
Okay.
So, because I asked her why she wasn't here, so you can take a little longer.
My relationship with the Smiths was actually probably more with Kathy. She took an old young man, young man in the political sense, that was looking at running for office, and reminded him of the principles of liberties and the constitutional values, and invited me and made sure I showed up to several different meetings and instructional, great instructors that had come in to talk about the Constitution, the importance of liberties, and how those liberties many times are infringed on areas we don't even think about, personal property rights and things like that. And so, it is so valuable to have citizens who are invested, and as important as it is to put your money where your mouth is, it is more important to put your time. And Mr. Smith, at the end of his life, where he could travel anywhere around the world and enjoy years and years of success, he chose to continue the work that he had been involved in and dedicate the time at the end of his life to continuing to perpetuate an education of the values of our country and the Constitution and the values of liberties. So, I would say, thank you for putting time, which is more valuable than anything else that we have, that we could possibly possess as an individual, into continuing educating and preserving this great country and what it stands for. That is the value, I believe, of these two individuals, and that's what I truly appreciate. They care about people, and they care about this country. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
When I think of how many people might have read the Constitution just by, on their, on their efforts alone, that's a pretty overwhelming thought. I, that's pretty, pretty special.
I still have a box to hand up, and I will continue handing them out.
That's great. All right.
She's walking in right now.
Yeah, we're going to give Kathy a chance to speak.
Oh, good.
I know you weren't going to invite me, but...
Yes, we were.
I did bring a handful, just because I knew that Bert would want me to make sure that you had new ones in your new suit pockets, in your drawers. Thank you all for this recognition of Bert especially. I did marry my hero, and we had 10 great years together. And in those 10 years, he worked with the National Center for Constitutional Studies, and together, those efforts were able to get out 15 million pocket constitutions.
Wow.
So, the Declaration of Independence is also here, and quotes from our founding fathers. I actually spent the week of the Fourth of July in Boston, and so I was able to see the homes of John Adams. I was able to stand in the bedroom where he wrote 140 letters to Thomas Jefferson in the last 10 years of their lives. And as you know, they both died on the Fourth of July, 1826, exactly 50 years after the Declaration of Independence. So, I was overcome with just a greater resolve to carry on in Bert's shoes, if that could be possible, and, you know, stay engaged and stay in the saddle and not disappoint our forefathers or our founding fathers, or Bert, or our Heavenly Father. So, I sure appreciate all of you, and he really appreciated your service. The county government is what's most important. So, you know, regardless of what's happening around the country, this is where we need to start with our families and our local governments. So, thank you for your service, and thank you for the award.
Thank you, Kathy. Let's give her a hand. All right. If Brett Burt will come up, and I, I don't know, do you, do you dare come up without Marisha?
Of course I do.
Oh, come on. Come on, Marisha, come up with him.
It wasn't cool how you tricked me to get here. We threatened rebuilding his property.
Great. So, our community organization, Community Group of the Year, is Brett Burt and Golden Beverage. And Brett, he's another one of those cases where you just, very unassuming, like you do have to trick him to get to the meeting, because he really doesn't love the idea of being singled out and pointed out and recognized, but he just always is there in our community for something that's going on, whatever it is. You see the guy everywhere. I mean, he's, he's at every event and every gathering and every, everything that's important in our community, he seems to show up at. But again, one of those individuals who is not content to just kind of show up, he wants to be a part of the success of what happens. And so, he, he gets involved and, you know, provides products and services and all kinds of things to help a lot of our community events go forward and go forward well. And so, Brett, we know that once in a while, you get a little elbow from, from Marisha to kind of help you along in those things, and so that's why we're glad that she's here, too, to be a part of this awards ceremony for you. But we just want to publicly tell you thank you for the work that you do in our community, for the, for the talents, and frankly, the good, good nature and good person that you are, and the value that you add, I think, has been magnified in our community. Commissioners, anything?
Sure. I got to know him when I first came on the commission and what great people and great friends they've become. There's not anything that we do in Weber County and in the city that Brett Burt's not a sponsor of and part of and making it happen. And you just have to make one quick phone call to Brett and say, "Hey, I need a little help here. I need a little help there," and he's there. And if he's not, we call Marisha, and then he's there. And so, it works either way.
It's true.
And talk about a couple whose life is giving to the community. I mean, that's what they do, and we so appreciate that, and the community has benefited greatly because of you folks. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add, it's always difficult to maintain that level of enthusiasm, and every time I run into him, he is just, he's excited, and when you talk to him, it's, no problem. Yeah, we'll take care of that. And people come and go, politicians come and go, but having community members like yourself and like your business, that brings a tremendous value to, to our community, that is constant, is what really makes the communities. So, thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Speech, Brett.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to you guys. I think it's kind of odd to receive an award for something that you enjoy doing, and enjoy doing it for this community. So, it's kind of strange to receive an award for that. That's something, that's the easy part of the job. So, really, just like to thank you. It's a privilege to do business here, and on behalf of our now over 100 employees, I'll accept this award for them.
Thank you. Give him a hand. Brett, we're going to want your picture, you and Marisha, so don't go too far. So, the award, the awards here that'll be presented are these beautiful crystal bowls, and let me just read a little blurb on them. This was much better than I could write, Shelley, so...
Well, it didn't come from, it was the original commissioner.
Good. Well, it's, it's wonderful. It says this. "Just like the beach sand in the Great Salt Lake, these quartz crystal bowls have the ability to amplify and produce a pure and powerful sound that resonates for a long period of time. It is comparable to the generous people in our community that volunteer of their time and resources. Their actions resonate throughout the community of Weber County." So, we're going to come down and take a picture with each of you and either do the demonstration first.
Well, I can't do it very well, so I have... I'm not as good as Ms. Weber County.
There we go.
Wow, it's awesome.
It'll ring for a while. It'll ring for a while. That is really cool. Let's give him a hand and we'll present him these awards.
I was excited. I was excited. You made it work. You first?
I wanna, I wanna have you.
What if your mom should get the cameras she wants?
Here, I can take a picture with you.
She didn't all do it.
That. There we go, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Too proud, huh?
Yes, it's a lot of work.
It's exhausting, but it's worth it.
Thank you. I'll hold her there. I, I kinda snapped there.
Thank you.
All right, Kathy?
Thank you so much. Well, of course.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'll put one in her pocket and one in her hand. Would you like to hold this or would you get a hold for you? Hold on, here, me?
No, the other one.
Oh, yeah.
This says Golden Beverage.
Oh, we'll get a hold of this one. We like the little-
Good to have home. Okay. One, two, three. Thank you so much.
I'll hold it for you to sit here.
Yeah. I want to.
All right, which one wants to hold? Well, each of you has been holding one of these. Which one would you prefer? That makes the sound ring out better.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, then, maybe you can't correct it.
Let's give them all a big hand. All right, back to work, I guess.
Can we do some more of that? That was fun.
Okay, we'll move to our consent items. Consent items, number one is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of one hundred six thousand, seven hundred forty, forty-four dollars and forty-one cents. Request for approval of warrants, number four zero six, six four nine, three four zero six, eight three two in the amount of one million eight hundred, one million, one hundred eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Request for approval to set the date of July nineteenth at ten AM for a public hearing regarding amendments to the operational budget of Weaver County for the 2016 calendar year. Request from the Weaver County Recorder Surveyors Office for an approval of the surplus, a nineteen six hundred series rider. Those are the consent items. Commissioners, any questions?
That I nine six hundred series rider, that thing's gotta be valuable.
Seen its better days. Okay, any other questions, comments on consent items?
I'll make them.
Oh.
Ricky Junior, do you have any?
Uh, just a little bit of summary of some of the top items on the purchase orders. Uh, majority of it, sixty-three percent or just under sixty-seven thousand dollars, one of the Weaver Morgan Health Department for flu vaccine. Uh, nineteen percent or twenty thousand dollars was split between two companies, uh, for concession supplies for the Recreation Facilities Administration. And then thirteen percent or fourteen thousand, two hundred fifty dollars for special events for sounds and light, sound lighting. Then, under the warrants, um, sixty-seven percent or just over seven hundred ninety-three thousand, um, transportation mitigation special projects. And then seven percent or eighty-three thousand, three hundred dollars went to capital improvements for a construction project and everything else in all categories is less than five percent spread around the county.
Okay, great. Commissioners, any questions for Lynn?
I'll make a motion. We accept the consent items as read.
Second.
Motion and second, do we approve the consent items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes. Thank you. To our action items. Jennifer, if you'll come up, this item number one is a discussion and/or action on a contract by, between Weaver County and Ben Fanua to host a fundraising event for our local law enforcement to support Dallas Police Department fallen officers.
Yes, and this is kind of a last minute event. This event is actually gonna be held tonight at the fairgrounds and it's a food truck. Um, it's the Wasatch Street Eats and they will just be meeting there in the parking lot. Um, and proceeds from this sale, uh, from this event are going to help, um, get some officers from, from Weaver County and Utah down to the, uh, the services that are going on down for Dallas Police Department. So, this was all kind of arranged. This gentleman approached Sheriff Thompson about it and then Sheriff Thompson approached me, so.
Well, I think, uh, that's a great way for us to be able to show support, to be able to send a few officers down there to be a part of that proceeding. And, and in light of what we talked about earlier, I'm certainly in favor of this and I, I hope that, uh, I hope that some of our officers being able to go will not only be helpful to those, um, families that have, that have been through this tragic loss, but that it'll also help our, our folks to be able to, to cope and, and do, uh, do what they need to do as they continue on in this really, really tough profession.
Yes, and it's great to see that the businesses come together to spend their evening in support of law enforcement.
So, I know where I'm eating dinner tonight. It's at the food, it's at the food truck.
I would encourage everyone to come eat dinner, so.
So, I'll make a motion. We accept the contract between Weaver County and Ben Fanahu for a fundraising event out at our fairgrounds for our local law enforcement.
Second.
Okay, motion and second then to approve this action item. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, to our item number two. This is a request for consideration and adoption of a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Weaver County, Utah, authorizing the issuance and sale of not more than twelve point, twelve million, one hundred and ten thousand dollars in aggregate, aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds and related matters. And we have Blake Wade here with us today, we have John Bond, we have our comptroller, Scott Park. I think Blake is gonna lead the charge here, but Scott, I think you should be sitting on the front row, just in case.
Just in case I mess up, Scott, go on now. Commissioner Blake Wade, your bond counsel from Ballard Spar. We have before you a resolution authorizing the issuance as described, twelve million, one hundred and ten thousand of general obligation bonds for library improvements. And this is basically setting a maximum amount based on what was issued previously. So, this is what's left in the election authorization. You can issue anything less than that, but this establishes that maximum. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, this delegates to, uh, the designated officers to approve the, uh, the final terms of the bonds, once those are sold.
And this doesn't, this doesn't actually authorize the bonds? This is the starting of the process, but we still have to come back and, and officially authorize for the bonds to be put out?
This is, this actually is the authorization for the designated officers to take care of that. And so, that basically says that we would need any two of the chair of the commission, the vice chair of the commission, the treasurer, or the county clerk auditor. So, we need two of those to approve the final terms. But this is the final action for the commission in approving it and basically delegating to those officers I mentioned to make the final determination on the principal amount, the interest rates, the terms of the bonds that would go along with that.
Anything to add, Scott? I see Linda was here. Anything to add on this? Good, okay.
I'll make-
Resolution nineteen?
I'll make a motion. We accept a resolution nineteen, Board of County Commissioners, to authorize the final bonds for the library project that was passed by the voters.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, to this next item, which is the re- request for consideration of the resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing the issuance and sale of not more than ten point one five oh million in aggregate principal to, uh, of sales tax revenue bonds, series twenty sixteen and related matters. Blake?
So, this, uh, the, this resolution approves again the issuance of sales tax bonds. The projects that we have described in here are the construction of road improvements to Twelfth Street, including sewer lines that may be put in that Twelfth Street and Thirty-five Hundred West for the purchase of a portion of the Bayview landfill that'll be used by Weaver County. And, uh, those are the two projects that we have. And the maximum principal amount that we've established here is ten million, one hundred fifty thousand dollars. This authorizes the bonds, delegates the same officers to make the final determinations. It calls for a public hearing to be held on August ninth at ten AM here, assuming the commission's meeting that day. And basically establishes the, uh, the proceeding for the, these bonds to be sold as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for these sales tax bonds.
So, my question is, is that, that I don't- There's a public hearing. Once we've, if we vote on this today, can any of those two names or those four names make any of this stuff move forward?
Any two of those officers can make that final determination.
Either the chair or the vice chair, or who?
So, it's any two of the chair of the commission, the vice chair of the commission, the treasurer, or the county clerk auditor.
You washed my hands of that.
Okay. I didn't understand that that's what, that's what we're, the direction we were heading on this was. So, so what does the public hearing do?
Public hearing is, gives an opportunity for anyone in the county to come forth and to express any concerns that they might have with respect to the project or the issuance of the bonds.
Can we change the issuance of the bonds then?
You can make it, so what, basically, section twelve of the resolution says the issuer hereby reserves the right to opt not to issue the series two thousand sixteen bonds for any reason, including without limitation, consideration of the opinions expressed at the public hearing. So, if following the hearing, if the commission said, "We don't, we wanna change this, we wanna reduce the size, we wanna take out a project," you, you can do that. In other words, before the bonds are actually sold and those final determinations are made, which can't happen until after the public hearing is held, you can, you can make that change. This is a resolution of the commission and so as such, it's open to change until the bonds are sold. Once the bonds are sold, then the, then the resolution stays, has to stay in place. But until that time, including-
But bonds can't be sold until after the public hearing.
That's correct, sir. Yes, the bonds cannot be sold until that public hearing is held.
And in the public hearing, we can establish the scope of the bonds.
So, this, this says up to a certain amount, so-
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
We can, we can issue a- any part up to that amount.
So, commissioners, if, if at the time of the hearing, or if between now and then, you wanted to reduce the size or reduce the scope, you can do so. The, 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 uh, the nice, excuse me, the, what, what, what's happening here establishes the box, if you will. And then you can go anything smaller than that. You can't go outside the box. You can't go more bonds or more projects after today unless you redid the process we're doing today. But you can do anything within that box. You could, you can shrink down the size. You could say, "We wanna do this project and not that project."
One of the, one of the things that's of interest here is that we think we may have some other options on the Bayview landfill purchase. And so, we're hoping that, and, and the rest of these, frankly, um, most of it is stuff that, that is nothing but a bridge. It's not something that we're actually going to, to pay a bond off for. These transfer, you know, it's, it's the transportation projects that, that are programmed in further years for, through our transportation funds. And this allows us to finish those projects and then, uh, as soon as that money becomes available that is already programmed, it would be paid back in full. So, it's not something that would have a schedule associated with it for payback. So, those are, uh, just a couple of the considerations there. Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, motion.
I'll make a motion, um, that we approve resolution, resolution twenty, uh, adopting or authorizing the issuance of sale of not more than ten million, one hundred and fifty thousand aggregate principal amounts of sales tax revenue bonds, series two thousand sixteen and related matters.
Okay, motion and second to approve resolution twenty. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Commissioner Bell? Chair Gibson?
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you, Blake.
It's a pleasure being here with you.
Appreciate your expertise on these issues.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I would like to request by the commission, uh, that we allow, that we adjust this agenda. I have to leave and take care of a personal issue, but I wanted to, uh, make sure that I had the opportunity to hear the elections canvass. So, we're, without objection by the commission, we'll scoot, scoot that ahead, uh, one, one line here. So, if we could have Ryan Kelly come up and, uh, request, and this is the request for approval of the twenty sixteen primary elections canvas.
All right, thank you for, uh, allowing me to be here today. Um, you have before you, if you look at the third page of the information you have, you have the official results of the primary election that was held on June twenty-eighth here in Weaver County um, for US Senate, and this only pertains to the Weaver County portion. Obviously, uh, statewide, there are other results, um, that are outstanding there. Uh, Misty Snow got sixty-four percent of the vote and Jonathan Swinton got thirty-six percent of the vote. Um, for governor here in Weaver County, um, Governor Herbert got seventy-two percent of the vote. Jonathan Johnson got twenty-eight percent of the vote. Um, for county commissioner, seat C, Jim Harvey got fifty-six percent of the vote and Caitlin Gockner got forty-four percent of the vote. And for state school board four, this split between Weaver County and Davis County, the Weaver County portion of that, um, Brent Straight got twenty-six percent of the vote. Brad Assay got twen- or got eight percent of the vote. Jennifer Gravitt, thirty-four percent. Um, Dave Thomas, nineteen percent. Elizabeth Carlin, thirteen percent. Um, I felt like this election was a, a very successful election for our office. Um, we had a very solid turnout this year. Um, thirty-nine percent of the eligible voters, um, participated in our election, which is a very, very strong number. Um, the goal of our office is, of course, to provide fair elections and allow people equal access to the ballot and I felt like we, uh, we accomplished that. Um, at the end of the day, it's really the candidates and the issues that drive, drive turnout. And this year, we had a couple of really good races, um, in the county and statewide and candidates that really did a great job of getting people out to the polls and participating. Um, our turnout surpassed the total votes cast in the two thousand twelve primary, which was a presidential primary. Um, so that's a really, really strong number there. Um, overall, we got a lot of, uh, compliments on vote by mail. Of course, we heard a few dissenting people, um, but we did hear a lot of compliments on that. And the, the message that we really heard from voters is that they appreciated, um, being aware that there was an election going on and they also valued the time that they had to study out the issues. They, they appreciated that and they were calling us, asking us about where they could go to get more information on the candidates. Um, at the beginning of this year, Weaver State, um, with our partnership with them, they conducted a survey of our voters and they found that seventy-nine percent of our voters felt that the receiving the ballot early made them a more informed voter. And that's one of the things that I think vote by mail does, does accomplish. Um, so as far as turnout goes, in the Republican primary, we had a forty-six percent turnout of registered Republicans. On the Democratic side, it was twenty-four percent. In state school board district four, it was thirty-three point nine percent. As far as turnout in person at the polling places, we had five point eight percent or five point seven percent of our voters actually cast a ballot in person on a voting machine. Um, ninety-four point three percent cast that in person for a total turnout of thirty-eight point nine percent. Um, on the ballots that were mailed out, we had about three point four percent returned undeliverable, which is a fantastic number. We're seeing that number go down every year. And there's a lot of things that our office does to try to, um, keep those lists up to date so that we are in fact mailing ballots to registered voters at a current address. And so, we continue to work on that. Um, but that's a, that's a very good number for, um, mailing. Um, as far as ballots that we received that we were unable to count, there were three hundred and ninety of those. Um, as you can see down below, we give a little bit of a breakdown on that. Uh, most of them were returned after the deadline. State law requires that they're postmarked, um, prior to election day. There were a hundred and sixty-five of those were, uh, postmarked either election day, excuse me, or later. There were a good portion of, uh, ballots that were received that the signatures did not match what we had on file. Um, every voter whose ballot was not counted was sent a letter and, uh, contact was made with that voter to try to give them a chance to, to correct that.
Now, say that again. Every voter who what?
Whose ballot was not counted that we received, they were sent a letter and contact was made with them, giving them a chance. State law- was made with them, giving them a chance. State law requires us to notify them within twenty-four hours of us not counting their ballot, so if it was unsigned, or if the signature didn't match, then we're required to send a letter to that voter, um, giving them a chance to, to correct that deficiency.
Okay, and was there some of those that are corrected, I guess?
Yes, absolutely.
Probably because if they forgot to sign, they're happy to probably have it counted if they meant it.
Absolutely, and every day we'd get a stack of affidavits, and what we do on the affidavits is we, um, send them a letter saying, "You know what? Your ballot wasn't counted for the following reason," um, but what we also do is we also require them to provide, um, the last four digits of their social security or their driver's license, and that way we can verify that it really is the person that it was intended for, not to somebody living at the house that can re, re-sign an affidavit or something like that. So we really take it a step further to try to, um, verify that we are in fact working with the voter, um, that is, is registered there.
So, so I see that not counted. Make sure the Count My Vote people know those three ninety in the breakdown, because they need to know that their count, that every vote was counted in Weber County, even though it didn't go the way they wanted it to, but their votes were all counted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Along with that, it says a thousand twenty-nine were pulled and reviewed. Do we review every single ballot for, uh, signature?
Yes. Every, every ballot is manually verified for the postmark, as well as the signature compared with what we have on, on file.
So this is a thousand twenty-nine that were pulled and reviewed? Is that the number, and the three ninety was the end total that we had, that were not counted?
Correct, yes. And, and every ballot, when it comes in...
Seven hundred, six hundred were able to rectify the issue.
Yes, and some of those were rectified in our office. For example, some of them, in our system, it shows a blank signature, but when we go, we have up to five documents, and so we can go in, we do a second review of that, we can go in and we can find those. So some of those were just corrected in our office that we were able to find that. Um, those that weren't are sent a letter, but yes, it's of that thousand, uh, twenty-nine.
Those numbers are pretty good, I think.
So, yeah, it's, I thi, I think very, very strong response on that. Uh, we did have nine hundred and fifty ballots that were turned in on Election Day, um, later in the day that we weren't able to count in the, uh, original count that night. Um, state law this year, uh, we worked with the legislature to be able to release that. We did release those, uh, Friday after the election, and I think that's a good thing to help just kind of solidify those results and let candidates know where they, they stand, and so we'll continue to do that in, uh, November and in future elections as well.
That was a problem at Morgan. They were still on pins and needles for...
They still are. That one's, that one's within ten, ten votes, so that one still could, could swing.
That's an interesting, um, lesson, I think, in, in the importance of just individual vote. I know we've had some city races here over the years, close by, where we've had coin tosses settled the, you know, the, the race.
I won City Council by two votes and then lost it the next day by six. It's winner loser, winner loser.
But no, yeah, and people need to understand that their votes do count, you know, and there are some of those that are counted after Election Day, and that's what the purpose of the canvass is for. Uh, but those, those races, you never know if it's going to be a tight one, like the race between Summit, Rich, Daggett, and that, that area up there, a City Council race. It could have been a Commissioner race, you never know, and your, your vote really truly is, is counted and is part of that total.
And that's one of those state legislative races that covers lots of different counties, and so each county then has to certify and canvass, right?
Correct, yes.
So this is the last county that can, canvasses today. Is that right, Morgan?
Yeah, Morgan and Summit, I think both canvass, uh, today on that one.
That's gonna be interesting.
Very, very interesting, for sure. Um, one of the other things that we did is we reduced our polling places down to nine polling places, um, from seventeen, and that allowed us to be a lot more efficient in, in what we did. Um, we'd really heard pretty good feedback from voters when they called and asked, "Hey, where do I go to vote?" For those that either didn't get a ballot or wanted to vote in person, it was really nice to give options where we do vote centers, and once we gave them two or three different options, they're like, "Oh yeah, I know where that is, and I'll, I'll go there." And so we seem to have pretty good success with that. That'll be interesting in November. You know, the turnout will be much, much higher. Um, hopefully with vote by mail, we can distribute that. Our votes were pretty evenly distributed across the nine, uh, polling places, which was encouraging for us, because we didn't want all of the voters to go to one and overwhelm a, a polling place come November.
So you hadn't, didn't have hardly more than a hundred person in each polling place all day long?
Yeah, there was, you know, some of them had a hundred and forty-five, some of them a hundred and twenty. I mean, it was pretty, pretty evenly distributed, but yeah.
Are you gonna leave that many next time, or do you think you'll start reducing those?
Um, for this year, we want to be consistent. Um, we'll kind of, I think, make that decision after this year going forward. Um, but yeah, that, that is kind of our plan. We've strategically looked at those. I know we worked with, uh, Commissioner Ebert, um, on that plan, um, but yeah, that is our plan going forward, is, is looking at nine, nine polling places, depending on how things go the rest of this year, of course. So, um, the last graphic I want to call attention to is the, the pie chart there, and that just shows how the ballots were received in our office. That first week, we got very few, um, back. The ballots hit the post office on Tuesday. It takes them a couple days to get through there, um, but after that, it was, it was pretty evenly distributed over the next three weeks, um, between the week of the thirteenth of June, the twentieth, and Election Week. Um, so that just shows that, you know, over that three-week period, it's about a third of the votes in each of those. Um, lastly, a lot of people put a lot of time and effort into the elections, and I'd like to give a little bit of credit to our, our staff. Um, we've got Shelley Jackson, Daniel Wade, and Sue Jensen here with us today, and then we had over...
You let them out?
I let them out.
That little tiny office you keep them back there in?
It's more like they let me out. But no, they, they really do a great job for us, and I feel strongly that we have one of the best election teams in the state, and this election went very smoothly. Um, there, there's always issues and things that we work through, um, but that's just part of the, part of the process, but the election process itself went very, very smoothly, and very few, um, concerns from voters, and those that we did have, we were able to work through, um, with them. So, any questions or any comments or concerns or anything like that?
I really appreciate you guys do a great job. Um, we're getting them out there. We got these ballots sitting right in their hands at home. I don't know how much more education we can do, how much easier we can make it for them to vote. Um, but I appreciate that we're doing this. I appreciate the, uh, vote by mail. Our percentages are, you know, we feel good about them, but they're still not as good as they should be. People need to get vote and, and, and make a vote, and their vote makes a difference. So, I appreciate that, um, what you guys do there. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll make... Fatiman, do we need a resolution to approve, just a motion to approve the canvas?
Okay. We'll make a motion that we approve the two thousand sixteen primary election canvas. Thank you.
I second the motion.
Motion is second then, that we approve the two thousand sixteen canvas. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. And our congratulations to Jim Harvey, who we'll be able to work with. Looking forward to it. Okay, Commissioner Bell, uh, it's all yours.
Well, you'll have to go back and look over the recording and make sure I did okay, so.
Wow, why do I get all the big jobs?
Okay, we're gonna get, we're gonna get this done, guys. Number four on the agenda, request for approval of a local transportation funding agreement by and between Weber County and Pleasant View City to establish funding terms related to the Pleasant View City, twenty-five fifty North Majestic Connection, and Douglas Larson. Morning, Douglas.
Commissioners, good morning. Pleasure as always. Um, you've seen these funding agreements before, again, this, uh, from our...
We've seen a couple.
Yeah, from our Weber County Local Transportation Fund for twenty-five, uh, fifty North and Pleasant View City. That, uh, that facility is a major arterial road which connects Pleasant View, Harrisville, and North Ogden, as well as two elementary schools, a community pool, and a fire station. Um, fundamentally, this project is, is all about, about safety. Um, that safety was one of the original five criteria that were prioritized by the COG and the county years ago when we first embarked on, uh, managing these funds. Um, uh, the Pleasant View City made, uh, application as part of our two thousand fifteen process. The project was approved by WACOG in October of two thousand fifteen, and subsequently was approved by the Commission on your master list, uh, in November of, of two thousand fifteen. The county has committed to assist with right-of-way and right, and related costs, up to six hundred, excuse me, sixty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars, and as well, the county has committed to assist with construction, construction-related costs from our sales tax for transportation funds, up to a hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And I also would like to note that Pleasant View City was successful in obtaining an additional three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars from UDOT. We can now complete both sides of, uh, the street. On this project goes from three hundred west to six hundred west along twenty-five fifty north, and again, safety, essentially a sidewalk project. Any other questions?
I'm fully aware of the project, so...
I think that we've reviewed it all, and I feel very comfortable with the project.
I'll take a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the local transportation funding agreement by and between Weber County and a Pleasant View City to establish funding terms related to the Pleasant View City twenty-five fifty North Majestic Connection project.
I second it. Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, moving along. Number six. Thanks.
Thank you, Douglas.
Number six, uh, Commissioner Ebert, you're gonna handle this one. Request for approval of a resolution of Weber County Commissioners of Weber County appointing members to the Weber County Library Board.
Yes, Linda, would you mind coming up really quickly? I love to call you out of the crowd all the time. Uh, we have three applications that have been forwarded to us from the Library Board. Um, Diana Allison, Craig Dearden, and Alice S. Hiria. I want to put an H in there and say Hirahia, but I think it's just Haria. Uh, I noticed that they came in, in order, but sometimes I don't know if that's really an order, or that's just how we, how we present them forward. So is there any particular order for these names on, is there a criteria that we reviewed that they came in? Would you?
I believe they did present them in priority order, um, but are, uh, excited about all three of the nominees. They're all outstanding people.
Well, I'm excited to get Craig Dearden off the golf course once a month, and find him some public service is kind of what I'm thinking there a little bit, so.
Um, there was a, a little bit of a concern with, uh, Craig, Mr. Dearden possibly moving. So if we were to advance Mr. Dearden, did you want to have a backup plan, or do we want to reach out to Mr. Dearden, have we had a chance to talk to him?
If I understand your question correctly, um...
My roundabout question?
I believe, uh, it was the, the pleasure of the Board that if an individual moved out of the county, that at that time they would request their resignation and ask the Commissioners to appoint someone for the remainder of the term. Uh, the Chair of the Board felt strongly that if someone were to move, uh, even though it may be legal for them to serve from outside of the county, that it was not in the best interest of, uh, county residents to have that, uh, continue.
Would it be advisable then to take Mr. Dearden off, or...
Pardon me?
Would it be advisable to take Dearden, Mr. Dearden, off of this list, or do we want to?
I think that's up to, to Commissioners, uh, how you'd like to proceed.
Um, I'm under the impression that Mr. Dearden has, is in the process of, of moving out of county, so.
Oh, well.
But I'm happy to appoint him if that's someone. I, I've reviewed Alice, and I'm saying her first name instead of calling her, because I don't want to say that correctly. And, uh, Diana Allison, um, and I'm actually kind of going back and forth. I maybe swayed a little bit more towards Diana Allison than I probably was before with direction from the, the Board, um, but I know that, uh, Mr. Dearden is, is a big community, uh, member,
Well, if he's not living in the county, I, 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 I think that's why I don't know for sure or not, so I don't know the answer to that.
I don't want to cause a hiccup.
I'd go with Diana Allison. She's the number one person on their list, and I'd go with that, if, that'll help.
Okay, well, then, I'll, I'll make a motion on my own item, that, uh, we approve Diana Allison as a member of the Library Board.
Second it. Any more discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Commissioner?
Oh.
I'm still aye.
Resolution?
It is twenty-one.
Resolution twenty-one.
And Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
And Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. We did a lot today for the library. That, that, get the funding now, you can, uh, keep moving forward there, so I appreciate what you're doing on that. I know it's been some, some struggles, but we got some pretty nice facilities coming. Thank you. Number seven, request for approval of a resolution by and of Weber County Commission for adjusting fees for the C and D landfill. Presenters, Commissioner Ebert?
Could we, Sean, would you mind coming up just to answer any specific questions? But we have been in the process over the last year of reviewing all of our operations and in areas where we can make changes, uh, in areas we, where we can reduce the loss that we've had, seemingly. We've run some of our facilities at a loss. We have started this process of reviewing our operational plan for each of those. As we were reviewing the transfer station, it became apparent that our C and D landfill was being, um, supplement, not supplement, subsidized through our general fund, and we need to adjust those, um, those fees. Uh, those fees were actually adjusted several years ago, down, which has caused some of the loss. Um, and then we're, so we're attempting at this time to address that. We want the transfer station to operate, um, with no subsidies, and so one of the steps we are looking at taking is adjusting the, uh, present C and D, uh, fee schedule from twenty-six to forty, and the reason we're looking at that is right now, when C and D, construction debris is brought to the landfill, it's actually loaded onto a truck and shipped to the C and D landfill. And so we are, um, subsidizing our staff, um, moving that from the lands, from the transfer station to the C and D landfill. And what we're trying to encourage is for individuals bringing in C and D commercially to take that directly to the C and D landfill. If they choose not to do that, then we are going to charge the fee it costs us to move it to the C and D landfill, and that's the purpose of this. Is that a good reflection of what we've discussed or what we're looking at doing?
Yeah, that's correct. The only clarification I would add is that this is the fee for the transfer station, uh, construction demolition, rather than, it's, we're not changing any fees out at the, the C and D landfill.
The actual landfill, yes. If I said that, that's, this is just specifically for the facility that we are running, which is the transfer station.
Correct.
Okay. Um, this also falls in line with what we're looking at in some of that bonding for Bayview, and as Commissioner Bell pointed out, um, we are in the process of still evaluating whether Bayview is something we're going to actually purchase. Uh, we're looking at some operational costs to make sure that what we have, um, looked at act, will actually be the actual costs of that, and so, again, in an attempt to, uh, make the transfer station not subsidized. So, that is the, what we're looking at doing. Commissioner Bell, if you have any more questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No, I, um, this is an important topic, and I appreciate all the work you've been putting on it, so I know you don't have much to do up there, so I appreciate you putting work in that, and Sean, you and your group out there, appreciate what you're doing, so I'm ready for a motion.
It is an ordinance, um, number seven.
This is a first reading?
Yes, this is a first reading.
So...
It's not an ordinance, then?
I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading, um, of adjusting the fees for the C and D landfill.
I second it. Any other discussion on it? I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Done. Thank you. Rick Rover, Rick's next. Request for approval of a resolution of County Commissioners of Weber County appointing members to the Ogden Valley Planning Commission. Rick?
Commissioners, we have two vacancies that we would like you to consider some names we can get replaced and get, um, up and running. We have five individuals who have applied for this. Two are existing members, Kevin Parsons and Steve Waldrup, and we have, um, Robert Wood. He was, uh, previously associated with the education system. He's in the Huntsville area. Gal Meekins, he, she is currently associated with research at the University of Utah, and she's in the Huntsville area, and then John Lewis, and he is currently associated with, in the development field in the Eden area, and those three are the new applicants. You bet. Do you want me to state those again? So those are the five individuals who have, uh, have applied.
Great. Um, I know a couple of them on there. I, um, is this a resolution number?
It is. It's twenty-three.
Resolution number twenty-three. Resolution number twenty-three. John Lewis, I'd like to recommend we put John Lewis on there, and Robert Wood would be my recommendation.
Okay. So we have two existing members in Mr. Waldrup and Mr. Parsons. Thoughts on, on not reappointing? Is this a common practice, or what are your thoughts on? Because Gail Meekins is, has an ama, is amazing resume. So I'm just working through the names a little bit. What are your thoughts about not appointing? Purpose, I mean, we are finishing up our general plan, and so transitioning members out that have been working on that plan, I don't see as a specific issue, but thoughts?
That's, I, I know Bob Wood. I've known him for, I don't know, thirty-five years. He's been a Valley resident for, I think, I don't know if he was born there, but probably pretty close, so. I know John Lewis. He's doing some development and is a great, doing a great job up there. And we need some folks that are on that planning commission. I just felt like it diversifies it out a little better. So I'm really, I feel really good about those two, so.
Okay. Did you second that?
I made a motion, so I need a second.
Okay, well, I'll second that motion then.
Okay. Any other discussion? It's a resolution, so it'll be a roll call.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye. Passes. Thank you. So we've got, all planning commissions are done now, right?
Yes.
At least for another year. Good. Okay, we're gonna go to item number H, public comment. Love the public to come up and make a comment. Sylvia, you come so regularly that I don't know that we can call you public anymore.
I was just gonna introduce myself as public. Sylvia Salisbury in Ogden. I just, I'm curious. And I noticed that Jennifer Graham is gone, so she may not be able to answer this. How is, how is this item out of the fairgrounds going to be advertised?
So they've started putting it on Facebook pages.
Oh.
It's, that's how it's gonna be advertised, is completely that way. This just came to our attention yesterday.
Yeah. Not even time to get it in the paper.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Because it is time-sensitive, specific to the funerals and the service is starting so quickly.
Do you have any idea what time it starts?
Today, five thirty.
At five o'clock, yes, ma'am.
Five o'clock? Is it at five?
I believe it is at five. That's what's on my calendar.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
So put it on your Facebook page.
Okay.
Thanks. Maybe the standard examiner will put it on their Facebook page.
We can do that.
Well, Mr. Neil Hanson.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you.
You better state your name and where you're from, though.
Neil Hanson, ten thirty-one Capitol Street, Ogden, Utah. This past election, I've received oh, dozens of phone calls, and I don't know why they call me, but I think it's just because they feel comfortable with calling somebody in the neighborhood that maybe care about a certain issue. But the issue is, is that they received their ballot in the mail, but they didn't receive the envelope that had postage-paid return on it. And there was a few that says, I just, it, it's hard for me to be able to have to put a stamp on something that should be public service, that should be paid for by the taxpayers. And I don't know if it's too late to do that for the general election, but maybe if you Commissioners could figure out a way of funding to have those envelopes printed and be able to pay for the return postage on it. I know there's about a hundred thousand registered voters, so if you look at about fifty cents per envelope, you're looking at about fifty thousand dollars to do that. I don't know how much the county has saved by not having so many election judges. But anyway, it's, it's just a concern with some of the elderly that don't have the opportunity to get out or even have the stamps, because now they do a lot of things online. And so I just bring it to your attention and see what we can do. I know that Minnesota, they do it that way through the, the whole state, and their voter turnout is up in the ninety percentile. And, you know, as we heard today of the county clerk in saying that some of these were at thirty-eight, thirty-nine percent, that that's good, but to me, it's not good enough. I think that people have that right to be able to do that. And, and I think we should make it just as easy as we can, that a person can fill out the ballot, seal that envelope, put it in their mailbox, and the mailman pick it up. So anyway, thank you for your attention on this.
Thanks, Neil. It's good to see you. It's been a while.
Likewise.
Uh-oh.
Hi, Hallen Willbanks.
Livin' Davis County.
Your staff.
I know. I just wanted to add something to Sylvia's contact, comments, is that Wasatch Street Eats is actually the organization that's hosting this event. And they are using social media to, to generate information about it. The county Facebook page has that information on it as well. So if you look into your social media, you can get all the information. Look on the county Facebook page and share that, and so more people can find out about the food truck event tonight. But that's hosted by Wasatch Street Eats. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comment?
Steve Waldrup, Eden. Just wanted to express my appreciation for the opportunity to serve on the Ogden Valley Planning Commission. And I'd recommend that as you study the general plan, there was a lot of time and effort, as you know, that went into that. Staff put in a, an unbelievable amount of time, as did many members of the community up there in the valley. And, and I think the consensus is that the plan has found the right line on some of those contentious issues that came up in that process. And so I just encourage you to, to take a careful look at that. And if you have concerns or questions, obviously there, I think, are a lot of answers that came out of that process. So thank you very much, and best to you.
Steve, real quick, have you felt like there's been some concern, concerns expressed from the Commission Office?
No, I haven't heard any at all. I, I don't know how, where you guys are in the process at all, but-
I think it's the best, one of the best plans that have ever been put together. And I think that it's, I know we've had a couple of briefings on it, and I think it's getting really dang close, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of blood, sweat, and tears that-
Yeah, there is.
Mr. Ewart has really emphasized to us is the implementation part. We do all this planning, but we need to implement it. So I think that's probably where our focus will be.
Yeah.
Not changing, but implementation, so.
Yeah, that will be, that will be a huge effort.
Thank you. Thanks for your service, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Public comment going. Commissioner Ebert?
I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. More adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.